So this is the July 12th Annual Reorganization Meeting of the Board of Education. I've already sworn in the two board members, David Trudeau and Patrick Bean. Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Roll call. Douglas B.
Here.
Douglas B.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Here.
Christopher Gabbett.
And.
Patty Lefland.
Here.
Ed Maron.
Here.
Nicole Pecourt.
Here.
Richard Sears.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
So we'll pull up the agenda. The resolve of the board of education recommends to the board of education to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion. A second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Aye. So now we're going to elect the president and vice president. So resolve that the board of education recommends the elected president of the Board of Education of this district for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Are there any nominations for the president of the Board of Education?
I would nominate Ed Maron.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, we'll do it. Are there any other nominations for the president of the Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the president of the Board of Education? Roll call. Patrick Bean.
Yes.
Douglas B.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Chris Gabbett.
Yes.
Patty Lefland.
Yes.
Ed Maron.
Yes.
Nicole Pecourt.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Yes.
Ed, you have been elected.
So if I'm in, the one is fine. Just gone over there.
Bow.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Ed Maron, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will do the vice president. Are there any nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education?
Nicole, are you going to sit down?
I want that.
John?
That's the time. I don't know how much time the vice president will take.
We'll make it work for either one of you. We'll make it work. All right? Good job. Either one serves. You can make it work, but it is time.
Nicole. Anybody else?
Nicole? Yeah.
Are you guys trying to kill me?
It's up to you guys. Whatever you guys feel comfortable.
Is anybody interested? Well, let's go that way.
John will say. I'm the gentleman right now.
You know, as far as the, so what I did institute several years ago was on our agenda setting meetings and all communication leadership wise, it used to be just the president and started including the vice president so that at least they have only one person involved in all communication. You know, someone leaves, not there, whatever. Also second set of ears. But the president doesn't have to be there. They both don't have to be there. We can do things by, you know, computer remote as well if we have to. So we'd be very flexible between this and committees to try to make it work for the people that can't try to make it there. So it's up to you guys.
If you can guarantee that flexibility and be there most of the time and...
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Do I just need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Listen, I have a second for Nicole.
All seconds.
Are there any other nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education?
Anybody else want to jump in?
Anybody else?
Any other nominations for the vice president? Patrick Bean?
Yes.
Douglas B.
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes, really thank you.
Chris Gabbett?
Yes.
Patty Lefland?
Yes, really big round thank you.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Nicole Pecourt?
Yeah.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
I, Nicole Pecourt, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I do. Oh, right here?
No, please. This is yours? Does that from you? Meeting is yours?
Oh, all right. Thank you. All right. Section E. Resolve that the board of education appoint Evan Bevo as the extra official student board member effective July 1st, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2023. Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Officers, resolve that the board of education appoint Chelsea McDonald to serve as a clerk of the Board of Education during the 2022-2023 fiscal year at an annual salary of $2,270 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion, please.
Call.
Cole, second?
Second.
Was that one? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Treasurer. Resolve that the board of education appoint Jennifer Stahl to serve as treasurer of the district during the 2022-2023 fiscal year at an annual salary of not less than $55,053.40 with an indemnity amount of $1 million. Motion, please.
Call.
Cole, second?
Second.
Was that one? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Officers, resolve that the board of education appoint Chelsea McDonald to serve as a clerk of the Board of Education during the 2022-2023 fiscal year at an annual salary of $2,270 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion, please.
Call.
Cole, second?
Second.
Was that one? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Treasurer. Resolve that the board of education appoint Jennifer Stahl to serve as treasurer of the district during the 2022-2023 fiscal year at an annual salary of not less than $55,053.40 with an indemnity amount of $1 million. Motion, please. Motion?
I'm not a special.
Okay, Nicole, second?
Second, Rick.
Rick. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolve that the board of education appoint Daniel Palkey to serve as tax collector of this district during 2022-2023 fiscal year at an annual salary of $5,800 with an indemnity amount of $1 million. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Okay. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolve that the board of education appoint Daniel Palkey to serve as tax collector of this district during 2022-2023 fiscal year at an annual salary of $5,800 with an indemnity amount of $1 million. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Okay. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolve that the board of education appoint Lee Siron to serve as the internal audits claim editor of this district during 2022-2023 fiscal year at an hourly rate of $2,250 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion, please.
Go ahead.
John?
I'll second.
Who's second here? Chris? Questions, thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next one is a consent agenda for other appointments, so it means it will cover all of them. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, other appointments, school attorneys, others, purchasing agent, Clinton Assessor, Warren of Washington County's Board of Cooperative Education Services, non-student physicals, insurance consultant, TSA plan, committee on special education, subcommittee on special education, committee on preschool education, impartial hearing officer, and Medicaid compliance officer, bein are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
No motion, time.
Ed, second?
Nicole.
Cole.
I do have a question.
Sure.
So we have five attorneys. Four of them are hourly. The fifth one, Mr. Brock, is $80,000. Why is that? Do you have anything?
So we, when we first started talking about Mr. Brock, we usually had several attorneys as a package at the rates, right? And then we started looking at the numbers of doing some of the regular work here at the district, and the dollar was pretty significant. So the idea was brought forward that if we had one in-house one to kind of have oversight at a reasonable rate, we could still have the other ones with specialties to cover all those as well. So that's kind of how it has worked. Then Mr. Brock has been kind of appoint in-house counsel and then the other attorneys. Now, that doesn't mean that he handles everything, right? You know, sometimes we go outside of him for different things, but that's, that's the concept.
So I have no problem with Mr. Brock. I actually think he's done a very good job for the district handling a couple issues. He's done an excellent job. So just making the math easy. So $200 an hour, that's 400 hours. What happens if Mr. Brock goes over 400 or is below 400?
The dollars stay the same.
It's still 80 grand.
It's still 80 grand. That was a, that was a big point of discussion, this first thing about that exact question, right? We kind of started looking at how much someone would take to do a certain amount of body of work, and that was the agreement with me with him, that he would stay with that number, not exceed it, and that it would be easy to do.
Okay, so I'm not going to put you on the spot, Jen. Obviously, you are paying Mr. Brock. So 80 grand is a reasonable number for him as to what he has done. We only have him last year. I don't know what we actually paid him last year. We didn't have him before that.
Yeah, we did. We had...
Two years.
Oh, we got him for two years, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we know if we've paid Mr. Brock for the last two years?
It was 80,000 this past year, same amount. It did not go up.
Oh, okay.
It did not go up. And the previous year was a little bit less, 66,000, I think it was.
But he wasn't doing quite as much.
Quite as much.
In fact, in fact, I was...
I'm believing, I think Mr. Brock does a great job.
No, no, no. But it's good, it's a good question. In fact, it was that amount based on what he was doing with some losses that we were getting, you know, to the district that made that conversation come up.
He was doing basically one thing, 66, now he goes everything.
And he also has Kevin Herring, who is in his office that I can speak from, for me that we use him a lot. I probably call him once to twice a week minimum. He does a lot of human resource stuff, a lot of FOIL stuff, a lot of educational, so he, and we don't get charged anything extra. I can call him 10 times a week if I need to and discuss whatever I need to discuss with Kevin as well. So he's, he's part of the deal too. So Kevin and John.
Sounds good.
Do we pay retainer fees on the other four?
No.
So no associated fees, only hourly if we use them. So they're strict billable hour within $80,000, so the loss is Mr. Brock.
And, and just for background, when I first got on the board, there were times where we only had one attorney in-house first without anybody else that was special. Then we started doing, bringing in other people because it made sense that between, you know, human resources, tax collecting, all these things, you needed to have a broader depth of background. So we started doing all that, but then suddenly we had one incident, the one issue that encompassed tremendous amount of time and it became really expensive. That's how we got here. Thanks for asking.
I'm good. Thank you.
It's good for everybody to know. So just, because we haven't voted yet, so any questions? If you want to go through this, because that agenda is going to cover everything in this section, for those of you who are not as familiar, all the way, this is item, section number five, all the way to designations, all right? So it covers, uh, school attorneys, others, purchasing agents, DSD, the non-student physicals, insurance consultant, TSA plan, CSC, everything that I mentioned. All right, any questions on that? All right, I have no questions. Have a, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right. So the consent agenda tries to make the meeting go faster, more efficient, and the assumption is that this has already been online. If you have any questions, we want to ask these ahead of time. Get here for it, you can ask them here as well, right? Last minute thoughts. That way we don't have to do a resolution for each one of the designers. Okay, the next one is authorizations, another consent agenda. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, authorizations to certify payrolls, conferences, conventions, workshops, attendance, to establish petty cash funds, designation of signatures of checks, superintendent to apply for grants in aid, advances from general fund to other funds, budget transfers on chief school officers' approval, and use of check signing device, bein are hereby approved. Motion first?
Please give one.
Which one is it?
I'm just thinking of everything.
All right, you're right, designation. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education the following resolutions on this consent agenda, designations, official backed, depository all funds, official newspaper investment of the idle funds, board of education meeting dates, established mileage reimbursement rate and school meal prices, bein are hereby approved, are approved. Motion, please.
Motion.
John, second?
I'll second, Nicole.
All right, any questions on these?
On school meal prices? We're, we're trying to set the dollar value that each school meal should be worth. Is that...
So, yeah.
There's regulations we have to follow, so each year you have to at least increase it by a nickel. There's a calculation you use, minimum is a nickel, even though we don't charge our children, you still have to maintain the calculation every year.
Or if a kid wants a second.
A second meal, yes. Yeah. But there is a calculation, New York State calculation, we have to do so.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Section, six passes. All right. Authorizations, as read before. Motion?
Any more motion?
Rick?
Rick.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, let's see here. This covers any questions on this one at all? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, section eight. Other items. Did I skip anything?
No.
Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education that the following resolutions of the consent agenda, other items, regulating extra classroom activity fund, cooperative purchasing participation in the following cooperative purchasing alliances, code of ethics, transportation, credit card authorization, association membership, establish temporary on-call rates, substitute, non-contractual stipendments for athletic events, site coordinator, correction of tax rule and tax bill, cash drawer and policies, bein are hereby approved. Motion, please. Anyone? Motion?
I want two.
Okay. Nice. Second?
Second.
We've got to be able to carry business, so, all right? Okay. Any questions on all of these?
I don't know if this is the right spot, Ed, from the conversation we had about charging people for athletic events, but I haven't talked to high school admin about this.
Right. Okay, so, that's a good question. Let's see, this, because this comes under... Where would that fall under?
Yeah, so I just saw, I don't see it as an item here. I saw it under...
Is it under...
You know what? We can do, we can wait and do that with other items to discuss. Okay. It's not actually particularly...
All right, all in favor? Is it?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, we are at reports.
Dan, you're up first.
Yeah. One notable item, just above my number nine, reports, policy 5300 is a code of conduct, and there's also a policy that's in here on, there's an ethics policy in here that we've had issue with before, where people said they weren't given that policy. So just, it's a quick read. I'll tell you, just try to find it and take a quick look at both those. Graduation, we had graduation that took my hat to our buildings and grounds and to the administrative team and the counselors. They did a fantastic job. I thought graduation was beautiful. The kids were great, and it was just a really good, really good ceremony, really proud of the, of the graduates and really proud of the families and just the whole environment was, was terrific. More progress, and you'll hear about it in a little bit, is happening with conversations with the VTA and working hard on professional development. That's exciting. And then we'll also have some time this summer for, certainly for elementary teachers, maybe for others, to work on their BAS proposals. Just in case some of you don't know, BAS is a wonderful period of activity time in the elementary school. BAS is an acronym for the Bead and Town Adventure Zone, and it's a time when kids can do something that's meaningful and exciting to them, that connects to learning, but isn't direct, more math, more science, or it could be more science, it could be more math, but it's not specific traditional instruction. It's a highly motivating time for hope, it's designed to be highly motivating time for our kids and our teachers. So we're looking forward to having, housing, hosting some BAS planning sessions this summer. That's what I have right now.
All right. Jen?
Uh, business office, we are still preparing for our audit. Our audit will take place starting July 25th. We're getting there. The cafeteria is in the process of resubmitting for our snack program because we are receiving the LT. Actually, she just got me the, the application. We do have to reapply for snack, so she just got me that application. We'll get that out tomorrow, hopefully get that back up and running. They're busy with summer school, feeding everybody for summer school and all camps, so they're very busy. Custodians are extremely busy right now, getting everything back into the classrooms and cleaning and doing all of their duties over the summer. And transportation is busy, very short staff right now, actually. Anybody, anybody interested in bus driving, that would be lovely. So they're doing the Y runs as well, which Y has cooperated with us for getting them to their camps a little bit later because we have so few drivers to get our kids where they need to go, so, but they're, they've been wonderful to work with, and they're about 15 minutes later than they want to be, but we're doing them this weekend. So everything's in full swing for summer.
The good news from an HR standpoint is right now it seems like we have all of our eight positions full, which last, it's been probably two years since we've had all those full. So that looks good. And custodians right now, we're only down two, two custodians, which you want to be fully staffed, but down two right now is...
It's better, we've been down four consistently, so we're...
Refining.
Refining people slowly, so...
Jen, how's it for now for the meals? Is it back in there or what?
Um, it's, right now it's great. Jump camp is running, and there's a ton of kids at jump camp, and everybody is getting breakfast and lunch, I believe, at jump camp. Then the summer school, we have summer bridge and regular summer school, so we have a lot of kids.
Yeah, more kids around than normal.
More kids. And the town camps will be, if they haven't already started, they're going to start it, and we also supply breakfast and lunch for them as well, so...
And then the town camps, Bead and Town?
Yeah.
The elements? What, are all the kids that go to the school allowed to go to the camps?
For free.
Yeah, for Bead and Town residents.
Do you have to reside in Bead and Town and still go to school and visit any student?
You have to go to school here.
Yeah.
So if you go, if you go to Seaton Cats, then you live in Bead and Town? No, but if you...
No, what I meant was if you, if a student goes to school here but lives someplace else?
Yes. So we have a few exceptions in our policy that allows that, and so if you live in the Serenac School District, but you come here because maybe your parents work here, you can go to these camps.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And you get the food as well.
And, actually, anything you can get the food, don't worry.
Yes, yeah.
Jen, are we behind, like, other districts paying our bus drivers? Is that why, is that why we're short, like...
Everybody's short. I wish it was just our problem, but it's really, everybody's struggling badly. We're definitely not the lowest paid bus drivers. I don't think we're the highest either, but we're kind of right in the middle.
And they need a CDL license, right?
CDL class B, yes.
And that's been bad in the state of New York. I have to miss the CDL driver and had to go through so many hoops, and he's a fire chief. He had to go through so many hoops to re-get a CDL license. It was unbelievable. This is the first time this has happened.
The regulations have gotten a lot more stringent, but we did actually just hire, we picked up somebody from Shazee that retired, and she's subbing for us, and then we just picked up a local guy that's actually subbing for us as well. So if we can get a couple more, we'll be wonderful.
Yeah, my brother-in-law, he drives from alone, and he's like, I could drive bus all day long, literally all day long. It's, uh, it's, people just don't want to do it, I ask.
Yeah.
All right.
And that's it, I think?
That's it. Okay. All right, committee reports. So, all right.
Is that audit?
Yeah.
It's a long time ago.
I know, I think it was a long, a while ago. I can't even recall what, I can barely recall being there.
We were there.
Remember the numbers, like, cafeteria?
Did it take too long still, or do we want to...
We did April and May.
Right.
Do we want to come back to it while we put up?
Yeah, yeah.
If we come back to that one?
Okay. Sure. Perfect. Professional development technology.
So I don't know if we had any board members there, but I thought professional development, we focused this time mostly on professional development.
There was some talk about technology and what we can be offering in the future. I thought it was probably our best professional development meeting we've had maybe ever. No, not ever, but the best one in a long time. We had really good participation, really good dialogue. We agreed to survey the teachers, kind of do an interest inventory for the teachers, what they thought would be important. We collected that data. We met again. We looked at that data. We prioritized that data. And it will help drive professional development opportunities this year and maybe years to come. Couple of things that will be happening in the near future for professional development. As I mentioned, we'll have two days for professional development for teachers to work on those creative Beattie Town Adventure Zone opportunities. Pick two days. Each teacher, I think it was each teacher, receives one. We have two because it might not work for them to come on a Wednesday and then maybe they can come on the next Monday. We're going to pick those dates tomorrow. We're also going to try to have two professional development days where we focus on just four specific topics. Those topics, and not in any rank order, but surprisingly, a lot of teachers, and it was, I guess, surprising to me, wanted professional development on CPR, first aid, and we thought we'd throw in the Narcan injection pen. You know, you never know when you need it. You have the, you have the need, when you have the need, you wish you would have taken the course. So we'll attempt to offer that course. We're going to offer professional development in social emotional learning or behavior. We kind of lumped the two together, behaviors, classroom behaviors and social emotional learning. But I think there'll be two distinct offerings. And then the last one, it wasn't math. Somebody help me with the last one was.
Curriculum?
Curriculum time, curriculum time. So, oh, we're going to embed curriculum time into those offerings. And then, so those will be two offerings and we'll try to select in those dates this week as well. And then we've agreed to try to enhance our understanding, try to enhance everybody's understanding of items in the curriculum that might, that we, the board, teachers, admin, place a high value on and identify those, document those, and maybe adopt those at the board level. And that way, a new first grade teacher knows, hey, you know, I see this big curriculum here, but these are the vital things that we really think are important, fourth grade, fifth grade, ninth grade. And have that criteria for them to know when they walk in the door, to do a check on in the middle of the year, where am I? Am I getting these done? We know it's important to have those for every subject area. We thought it would be best, you might like this, John, because you're just a math guy, we thought it'd be best to start with math because it's a little tangible, it's a little more concrete. And that way we could, like, again, this is just an example, but a third grade teacher might know what math facts are most important in third grade and how can they embed those into the third graders and get a certain level of numeracy in those kids. And again, all the way up from twelfth grade all the way down. And we, so there's a good dialogue on should we back math from twelfth grade down or should, I mean, we talked about kindergarten teachers know that it's not a secret for a kindergarten teacher. It's a little more confusing in third and fourth and other grades. But maybe we thought we could work down and up and maybe meet in the middle. So we'll start with math this year and then in subsequent years, we'll go to other areas. We had a long, a strong dialogue on the value of the science of reading and how science of reading isn't being taught, it's never been taught in preparatory programs to become a teacher. Yet we now know that that dialogue between balanced literacy and whole language is the wrong dialogue to be having in the wrong place to be, to be putting your stick in the sand. We know that the science of reading is evidence-based and research-based. And we know that the work hasn't been done before. And so we know that we're going to have to be doing that moving forward. So that was all, that was the dialogue we had. It was two meetings. It was great. Gave us great information. And I think it's given us a good, a good map moving forward. Scott reached out to his, the BTA team and said, I think his message was, hey, you know, you've mentioned a number of times to BTA leaderships that you want to be involved in curriculum. Here it is. This is your opportunity. And I think you just reported to me anecdotally that you've got good numbers.
Very good response.
Very good response.
We're appreciative. You want to be involved. Have the voice. We appreciate that opportunity.
I have a question.
Sure.
Back to when you're talking about having classes of special sessions for teachers for CPR and Narcan and stuff like that. Are we going to demify that person if, God forbid, something happens?
I think they are.
I mean...
Yeah.
The state laws come...
Okay.
Good.
But is the school going to back?
Yeah. Yeah, so then we can double check with nicer insurance carrier, but I think they are.
Actually, the policy, school policies, the state policies require the school back, back to people as well. Okay, do whatever we can, we can support them. John, you have a question?
Two things. One on the CPR and safety. One of the things we did when we went to Shaysie is we also had some training for staff on how to use fire extinguishers. After there was a fire where the person tried to use it, didn't know how, and they almost lost the whole thing. And it actually was very enjoyable training. The teachers did a good job enjoying it, so that might be a frock for them. It doesn't take a lot, but if you're aiming in the wrong place, the fire extinguisher doesn't work. And secondly, on the math, I would hope that you have great conversation between the different grade levels.
Yes, that's what we're going to do.
We just had this in my district and the elementary church, the whole mass here, about any conversation with the secondary, the teachers, that was...
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a problem.
So part of the feedback, thank you, John, part of the feedback was, you know, we'd like having those conversations across content areas, across grade levels and up and down. But what we were targeting here was some people from every grade level so that we can make sure that it's robust and complete.
When we say some people from every grade level, I'd be curious to know what those numbers that we would like to hit are so that we can go back and see, you know, are we hitting those numbers? Have we made sure we've given the time for teachers to take out of their day to take those classes?
Yeah.
So I think, I think if we're going to do it, we need to have a measurable metric.
So, I think right now, so right now, what we're going to try to, what we're going to try to do, what we hope to do, it looks like we're well on our, maybe we're well on our way, is to give a couple of days over the summer to, and actually, we're going to use thought exchange to get some feedback from everybody, okay? And then we're going to give some days over the summer for, just start the product. The first measurable pieces, can we develop a product that we can bring, that's usable for educators and understandable for students and understandable for parents, that we can bring to the board and have the board adopt it? And I can say with confidence to the board that, you know, it's not perfect. It's going to be a working document, but it's something that we feel is our best effort moving forward. And it's also, you know, vetted by the administrators. So administrators are all there, BTA was there. It's a three-party group. It's going to be the teachers, the administrators, and at the end of the day, the community. I guess you guys represent the community. So that's the, maybe we, why don't we see what that brings and then see what metric we might be developing after that. Okay?
Anybody else have questions on this? I do have one. On the reading science, Dan, isn't some of that, wasn't some of that covered when we were going through that exercise of evaluating reading programs?
So when we are evaluating reading programs, we look for, actually, we selected the reading program, I think, that had the highest ranking with some of those measures. But the reading program gives you a number of tools, right? And if you don't understand the five major components of reading and you don't understand where your kids are on that reading spectrum, starting with phonemic awareness and phonics and moving all the way through to comprehension, your tools, you're not going to know which tool to pick. And that's one of the issues that we see. We see people, we've seen people who have written programs that have were widely selected throughout the country. And I'm not going to name names because I know that we have people who still to this day love that program. And the originator of that program has just recently come out and said, I did a disservice to kids. My reading program, actually, we need to unteach these kids what we taught them in this reading program because it's not accurate. So, so the reading programs, some reading programs have the components, but if you don't know how to use those components at the right amount, then you're, if you're working with comprehension on a student who can't put phonemes together and has low vocabulary, has zero fluency, if you're focusing on comprehension, you're probably missing the boat.
So how is it that the programs doesn't give you, so because the program's giving you a roadmap and the fundamental background of the educators, what's the gap, I guess, the question?
Well, you just mentioned it before and I'll mention it again. There is, when you go to the preparatory programs at every institution, they haven't been, they haven't been giving students instruction on the science of reading. I'm on the advisory board for Plasmat State and I said to them, we're doing a disservice if, you know, we are not focusing on the science of reading. I think there's one state right now that mandates that their state university students that want a teaching certificate, they have to receive a certain amount of time and instruction, not in just reading, which everybody does receive time and reading instruction, but in the science of reading. And it's odd, now think of this, Mississippi has historically had the lowest performing students in the country. Right, John? The lowest performing. Their teachers are coming out and they have had the fastest gains in student performance in the last few years because of that mandate. Maybe it was about five years ago. I shouldn't just pick it up. That's what I remember hearing. Where they said, hey, we've got to focus in on reading. This is the right, this is the right path. So there is no fundamental, there is no fundamental, there was always a fundamental argument on reading instruction and there still is, it still exists today, but this isn't being taught in the teacher preparation programs. And the programs don't give you a roadmap. Actually, we had one person passionately say that they don't like, they don't like at all and they feel it's an insult to have a scripted program. But we have two scripted programs that are based in the science of reading. And that is, and we're seeing gains with those programs, but that's, what we'd rather have, other than a scripted program, right? Is a well-versed, is somebody who can gather the data, not somebody, everybody who can gather the data, understand where the student is struggling and understand, okay, I'm going to utilize foundations here, this amount. And then once they start making progress here, then I'm going to move to here. And I'm going to push this one kid. And this isn't real, this is, you know, there's no program you're going to buy that's going to move you along where you are and you along where you are and you along where you are, right? That's the voodoo that a great teacher does, right? And that's why you can't do that with a script. You can do that when you understand where kids are on a reading spectrum and what do they need next and what are they struggling with or what's their hole. And that comes with great assessment, which our teachers are great at. And our teachers, you know, when we look at our data, we're doing pretty well, right? We look at our data every year. We're doing well. We're just, I'm just saying to you, like Mississippi said, that their teachers, we can do better. We can focus on the science of reading. And that's what we said at the professional development meeting. But right now, Ed, we don't have, we're not, people aren't coming out of preparation programs with this. Our products are good. They have good tools, but we need to put it all together a little bit better.
Sounds like a good district goal.
It is a good district goal.
Yeah. All right. Anything else?
Not long.
Okay, let's see here.
I'm ready now.
You ready?
All right. So the audit committee met on, geez, the 22nd? June 22nd? We discussed April May financial reports. First off, a brief overview of the financial reports and the food service program, giving us totals for breakfasts and lunches served, resulting in a nine percent increase in meals served over the previous year. So things are slowly and surely getting better. We discussed changes to health insurance, flexible spending vendor, having to do with some issues with the vendors. See, the application submit for temporary, continuing providing free meals to students. And we discussed the pandemic EBT cars that were provided to families. A lot of the discussion was involved, like, you know, the program was a bunch of that discussion, what they're providing, how they're providing and free for the summer programs, the family support program. And we were approved and we do not have a next, or we, audit committee being scheduled yet because we're waiting for the completion of the audit to be done, to be able to do that. Is that it?
All right, next one, operations.
Yeah, we met on June 22nd. We approved converting the district office into six pre-K classrooms. That opens up three classroom spaces in the elementary wing here for about 1.9 million, which eight percent of that state kicks into Plasmat. The revenue from those six replay classrooms is bringing about 500,000 a year to our school. We also approved playground improvements to accommodate kids with physical challenges. And we approved to renovate and newly acquire home storage buildings. The district offices are going to be relocated to corner Route 22 in Haynes Road.
Potential.
Potentially, we did build it. And we're doing some maintenance issues that we brought up back in the 2020 audit. We also discussed transportation facility, but we don't know on how the electrical bus issue is going to work out with Hoppo. So we got that on the back burner. That'll be a big project if we have to end up with that, space issues, money issues.
Right.
That's about it.
Has there been any discussion on hydrant buses too, or not just the right school?
No. I think a lot of our issues are going to be space. Obviously, our bus drivers take the buses home now. We're converting to electric buses.
So when we say approve, so we're approved, the operations committee is approving that and we're working through with our architect and our engineer and massage this stuff and find justice. And then we'll be bringing it back to the board. And the board, at that point, if they're happy or they want to move things around. And then, once the board says, let's go, then we pick a time to bring this to the community.
Was that November or December?
Yeah, we're shooting for November, December, right? January, somewhere in there.
So we're going to spend a little bit on...
I don't want to jinx anything. We're working on it. It's been jinxed before, so... Good. I will let everybody know if something good happens immediately that segment happens and then we can have better dialogue.
All right. Okay, policy. So...
Let me just, just so we're clear on this, what is in theory going to happen is that it will be donated to the Board of Education. The Board can accept donations. The Board actually has a piece of land that was donated to us a few years ago, back in the woods over here, that we don't utilize. It's landlocked, actually, so it's not like it's, you know, you can't drive right up to it. So the idea is if everything goes well, there'll be a donation for the Board to accept that could then open up some of the pathway that Chris is talking about. And I want you to know that donation's me.
All right, policy. That was on the 22nd. So we covered the school district officer and employee code of ethics for especially newer members. So New York State School Board Association, who we participate with on the state, they send us, part of a service where they send us updates to our policies. And so we just take those, our ambitions, whenever we change as part of the state and the equal ethic. So it's pretty straightforward. Some of them get a little more complicated. So the code of ethics revision and the internal audit function also had a revision. Nothing major there. But we did talk a little bit about the student harassment and bullying prevention. And that one is going to require some more discussion. I know Dan's working on it, so we're leaving that for...
Assistant Superintendent Tannen is working on it.
And that was it. House of Safety.
I'll be open.
You chime in there whenever you want.
Okay.
All right. I'm not recording. I don't too. We, that, at 6:22, there was a lot of discussion, a big educational thing for me, seeing that I'm here to the board and I work at another school district, how impressed I was with how Beattie Town, you know, takes care of their kids and all that. So we talked, they let me know when the doors are open at 7:28 and they'll lock to 20 minutes after. Some of the doors had had some issues in the past, but it appears that maintenance is on it and takes care of it right away. At some point, we would like to have an active shooter drill from the state police. I believe one has been been requested, but...
I think I have a meeting tomorrow morning on that issue with the commander or some high-ranking official from the state police.
Okay. We will be having, correct me if I'm wrong here, we won't be having SROs anymore, will we, had security guards?
Well, yeah, close. So we'll still have, we'll still have an SRO, but it will be a different... So we still have, we'll still have an SRO, but it will be a different SRO, because he's going back into the active force. And I don't think that person's been appointed yet. And we were calling our current folks, we were calling them school safety officers, and their terms, just a term only, title only, is going to be the civil service title of guard. The task and what they do will remain the same.
So it seems like our SRO is going to be a deputy?
So we had, we did have one. Yeah, so we've always had a deputy as our SRO. So that particular.
It was down here in the agenda. It looks like you yourself and Mr. Pavro held an agreement that we're going to have another deputy in here for 30 grand.
Yeah, so we have to approve that contract every year. We've always had a deputy. We had Deputy Bob Anis, has been here for a number of years. He's going to Beverly Clayton Community College, and we don't know who our new one is. But that is a grant-funded contract that we've approved for the SRO, and will be a deputy here. I want two guards and a deputy, whose title is an SRO.
Have we ever had a consultant come in to look at school security and safety? Somebody that specializes in that? I mean, because I know we're talking about different positions, but there's a number of companies out there that will actually come in and assess your school's safety and give you recommendations on the positions that need to be filled, different activities that you should be completing.
Yeah. So, quick question. We did that specifically for school safety, perimeter safety. Even they looked at everything, our tanks, where tanks were, where propane tanks were located. And actually drove a lot of work that we did. We corrected all, we corrected all those, I don't want to say corrected, but we took all those recommendations to heart and really implemented a lot of those recommendations. That was completed about nine years ago. Since then, we've had safety folks come in and look at, how can we secure the offices and give the offices, like, instant access to 911 calls, or panic buttons, or whatnot? And then, a couple of years ago, we also, we've done a lot of work with our cybersecurity, which has been a big focus. But you bring that up, it would be good to engage in the, you know, the school shooter drill again, but it was probably time to have somebody else come in again and look at that and see where we are.
So I think my question is absolutely geared more towards student safety during an active shooter situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a pretty hot topic.
Sure.
Right now, oh, yeah. I think it's something that we should, we should look into having an outside, a third-party come in and assess our school safety on that matter.
Nope. There's, I mean, I guess it's a board decision, it's a board discussion. I can't argue with that, right?
So that part of safety was a big component of the capital approvals that we did on the entrances. And I think, were we the first district in the area to do the active shooter drill?
We were the first to do the active shooter.
So when stuff started happening, we. But there's nothing wrong with looking at things again.
Have we had any discussions on our front entrance?
Which one?
Our high school front entrance, like, the way that.
Double doors.
Yeah, double doors. My opinion, it is very easy to get into a school.
It's very what?
Very easy to get into this school.
Yeah, we didn't have those double doors there.
We have double doors. We have one, yeah, like, one door is locked.
Double lock.
Should we have the second set of doors locked with that person who lets you in there? I can come to the school 10 years ago, eight years ago, yesterday, and say, I'm coming to pick my child up, and not have a child here being buzzed in. Doesn't matter who's there.
You get the two sets of lock-in doors with a visible window in the center of somebody actually identifying you before they let you in at the second set of doors.
It's conversations like this that should be fed all those. I mean, I know we all might have a need of that attitude. I think there are people that professionally do this.
Yes. And I think that would be one of the things that they would change here. It's easy getting into this school.
So could I just jump in on that? And I'm not disagreeing. We had that discussion back quite a while ago. The Board at that time, part of that discussion, it wasn't the only part of the discussion. There was a discussion of being outside, and at the high school, it might not matter. It's much, at the time, now it's different with Beaverton Elementary, right? They have the nice overhang. But it was, we're keep parents out of the elements, is that.
It really doesn't, I hate to say it, but it doesn't concern me, it's the safety of students. It was back to the league.
Yeah, so I would agree. And that's, actually, at the time, we didn't have this double door, we didn't have, we didn't have the Beaverton Elementary double doors. I think we had Carmelhead double doors and the high school double doors. But that's, these are the kind, these are the kind of discussions that Boards have had, and you get to make those changes, right?
And let me get this straight. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. It could be a student walking out, not knowing anything, without somebody at the first door. Just, if I'm walking to the door, and it's happened to me, the students don't know who I am, even though I'm coached here, they've held the door open for me where I've walked in. And now, if we have that second door, that was, that office changed somehow, so they can monitor it instead of, I think that would be beneficial for this district in the long run. I know it can't be done overnight, but I think it's something we have to discuss.
Well, I mean, you do know we cut that hole in there so they could monitor the doors. What are you, you're saying?
Between the two.
Oh, between the two sets, that's what you're saying.
If a student is leaving, if a student is leaving at 11 o'clock to go to a doctor's appointment, I'm walking to the front door, and I just have to meet them at the right time, they'll hold the door open for me.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
And that's not, I'm not, like I said, I'm not pointing fingers at it, it's just, I'm courtesy of all, so.
Sure.
And now I have access to the building, because that second set of doors, there's nobody monitoring that door. And because of the way the office is. I mean, she's doing her job. She has 10 different things to do in there. And it's not, I mean.
So when she, pass around your pictures, I'm going to let you.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I'm going to say, it's a good.
We.
It's creating that second door lock, and a bigger space in between, so a person can get through both doors before.
And then, having a person monitor that second door, I just think it's very easy.
We do have somebody monitoring the second door.
But nobody keeps them from coming in.
I can walk right in, though. I can walk right in.
I, 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 I mean, we love school safety here, right? We love this discussion. We can drive this discussion at safety, maybe we can drive this set up to the special board. We can get some feedback from a professional who can come in and be of help. This is great. So we don't tell everybody what class is bulletproof, but we have a lot of bulletproof glasses around here. We have a lot of shadowproof glasses around here. We have a lot of good doors. And it would be nice to have somebody say, look, you're doing a good job, like, this would be your next steps, right?
Right, so let's have the safety committee take a look at that with everybody there, and start putting together a plan.
And I'm not knocking it, I can go in the right direction. I really do. But I just find it easy.
That's what it is? Yeah. And that is, when you're talking about students and all that, I worked in the school district for 22 years, and I worked as support staff. That's a very, very common problem. You know, the kids will just go, okay, here's the adult, eleven minutes. And there are professional groups that will, I mean, I've been involved in shelter replacement training, I also know about Alice Training, and different things that can be pursued, and I think has a community to get some pretty decent proposals, please.
We've done the active shooter training, it's insane. Like, we have been the response to it. It is legitimately insane, the training that those guys.
Oh, yeah.
Put in the area for.
Last time we did it, we had multiple staff members crying. It's very traumatic.
Yeah. Also, Alice Training is, you know, it's kind of controversial, but, you know, that's a different way that students react during an active shooter drill. And like you say, we can talk about it.
I hate we're even talking about it, but.
I hate we're even talking about it.
Well, it is, well, that's one of the biggest things on parents' education mind.
Does it seem like there's enough on this topic that, maybe setting aside a specific time for us to discuss this specifically, whether it's the Health and Safety Committee or.
Well, do, do, it makes sense.
Well, I'm not sure, is that, are you, are you saying, are you, I shouldn't interrupt, but are we saying, let's do this through Health and Safety, where we have two board members or three, it depends on the committee size? Or are we saying, do it at Health and Safety, but also, let's hear from the whole board?
So due process, let's start with Health and Safety, because that's what we're out of.
Yep.
And if that committee deems that it's necessary to have a whole new supplement, then bring it to the Board and do it, we'll do it. Okay? Yeah, I've been involved since Columbine, on safety for schools. Right. It's crazy. It is, it's important, too. So notes on committees. So I get, I get the privilege to assign people to the committees. So in the Board portal, if you haven't seen it already, there's a folder on committees. It breaks down what the committees are, how many people get on it, et cetera. So if you're interested in something, send me an email, tell me why, whatever, interested, and we just have to juggle people based on schedule and fit you in where you have value or where you have an interest.
It's actually on the traditional items to discuss, we have them here.
Oh, okay. I jumped it on. All right. Public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Well, yes, someone. Please state your name, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Care, I'm the president of Beaverton Teachers Association. And I just wanted to welcome the new board members and say, in the month of June and July, how much I have appreciated working with Mr. Mannix, the administration, the office, the staff members, how open and willing people are to have discussions and to problem-solve the professional development, the idea of developing the MAP curriculum committee. Just so many positive steps, you know, coming to an agreement on the contract. There are a lot of positive signs that we are moving in a, in a, in the right direction. We just wanted to thank everybody. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Minutes, thus presented. Result of superintendent schools are convinced to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Motion, please. Chris?
I'll second it.
Done. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Session 12. Result of superintendent schools are convinced to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and 504 recommendations dated 7/12/22. Motion, please. Cole, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. The next one's consent agenda for personnel. Result of the superintendent schools are convinced to the Board of Education of the following resolutions for this consent agenda, resignations, creation of position, appointments, and stipends, CSC, CPSC, be and are hereby approved. Motion, please. Motion, Chris. Chris, second.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with sending this motion through. The two new associate principals, what buildings are they associated with? It wasn't listed in the agenda. And I apologize, I wanted to be on one of these hiring committees, it just, my schedule didn't work out.
Good question.
Yeah, so we're still looking for one at the Carmelhead. One is for PES, and one is for the high school, as we.
And who would that be? Is it Ms. Musso?
PES.
Where's she at?
PES.
Okay. Mr. Miranda, did I say that correct?
Yes.
Yes. How you doing? Nice to meet you, thanks for joining us, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming today, appreciate it. Nice to put a name with a face. Sorry, my name's Doug Beatty.
Hi Doug, I'm Marcus Martin.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Not yet. Just about.
Right, right. Really, really good. And, well, you kind of led the charge, we were going to point out the wonderful staff members. We also have Ms. Titherington. What's that? Oh, Ms. Kiefer.
Hi there.
Oh, oh, all right. Creation of your appointment for elementary teaching. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. Any other questions on any of personnel stuff? Who are you going to refer?
So we did, we did say, we recognized two, right? Then associate or to PES. Do we approve that?
Not yet.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we approve. On this personnel section, like I did last time, since it is personnel. We haven't had a chance introducing two board members. We got the other ones last time, so we'll chance the fair to you guys. Tell us why you got here, anything you want to tell us, and welcome aboard.
I'm David Trudeau. I've lived in this district my whole life, and there are things that I've complained about in my living room that my wife told me, but I wanted to do something about it to run for the Board, so that's why I'm here.
My name's Padraig Bean. I think the biggest reasons I got involved, there's a, there's four of them. You know, I've got two kids that are currently enrolled in the elementary school here, got a third one that's going to be enrolled here, coming up here pretty shortly. I have a wife who works here at the school district. Obviously, the operations here are incredibly important to, you know, not just my kids' education. I think it's important that if we are going to be involved in the school district, like you said, if you're going to, if you're going to recommend things and things like that, you should be there to step up and make decisions and be part of it.
Well, this is the place to get informed. Because you may not always have the whole picture. Right? And so this is the place to have the conversation, thought and. Board, we're aboard?
Thank you.
Can I just add a little bit, second here? Jen comes to us from just down the hallway, actually, she's been in the counseling office for over a decade, we'll just leave it at that, does that sound good?
Yeah. That was very gentle, thank you.
And Marcus has come to us from Georgia. He was originally over in the western part of the state, was down in the Georgia area, outside of Atlanta, and now he's here, his wife's, is she a professor at Plasker State?
She is dean of the School of Arts and Sciences at Plasker.
So welcome to the North Country, and welcome to Beaverton Central School District. And Olivia got her start here in the pandemic, and did a great job. And what I remember about Olivia was, she had that girl's mindset, and then when things came up, she would take the deep dive and work on whatever it is that she needed to work on, and to just continue to improve, and it was paid off for her with her permanent deployment, or with her probationary deployment, so.
Miscellaneous consent agenda. Result of superintendent schools are convinced to the Board of Education of the following resolutions for this consent agenda, initial evaluations during the summer 2022, payment to attend CSC, CPSC meetings, use of district facilities, letter of agreement, Dale Tompkins contract, SRO, 2022, 2023 school calendar revised, home league contest, school bus lease agreement revised, fingerprinting, be and are hereby approved. Motion, please. John, motion, second. So now, let's, after discussion, Dan, you had already talked about use of facilities, that's on.
The home league contest that you're referring to? So we had a quick conversation, and I apologize for not having this conversation with my admin team first, but it's great that we're approving all students at Beaverton that can attend home contests free of charge. It's great. One of the questions is, you know, when we were broke, or when we had, when our budget doesn't pass, you know, you have to charge for these things, but that's not our case anymore. And we're not in financial distress right now, and we're not in an austerity budget. And we still charge our adults to come watch their kids play.
Their own kids.
Their own kids play. Their own kids play. And, and others, we've charged the Saturday night folks too. And I, if, if, I'm not saying we don't need to pay another person to help manage the facilities because there's value in having somebody at the front, right? We know that. We've talked about that many times here. That's a safety thing, just having somebody at the front. So we're not trying to cut costs, but I, or what we're also saying, is that something we want to think about for August or September? And just say, hey, you're coming, if we're having, if our kids are playing, you can come watch them. Why pay two bucks?
I guess what does the $2 go to? Is, is my question.
You can ask the queen of cash over there.
What's the $2 go to?
It goes into our revenue budget for admissions. And it usually gets turned back into something for the athletic department normally, if, if they're in need of something.
Yeah, and there were certainly times when we needed to do that and I remember that time well. And we would have never taken that away. We're in a different spot financially. And, and we, what do we, what do we generally generate from those two bucks? All those $2 bills?
I think I have $10,000.
$10,000, all right. And there is a cost and there is a cost, you know, to have, you pay somebody 20 bucks, 22 bucks in that order to, to collect that.
Yeah, per game, $30 per game.
$30 per game, okay.
But, but in principle of philosophy, and a lot of parents will say this, you know, come and watch your kid play. You're the one out there. Why, why should I have to pay?
The reason I ask what it goes to, it's like where I went to school, you, you paid and it just was what it was.
Yeah.
Because parents understood the idea that that money was going to go into New Jersey for the next year or, you know, improvements in bleachers or, and it was just, it was part of the game. So I guess if, if that's the understanding, then, then okay, I understand paying the two bucks. But if, if we're barely breaking even because we're paying somebody, you know, $22 an hour to be there, you know, what's the, really what's the points, you know what I mean?
That's why we can't do it again.
Is it called safety? I mean, is it only allowed if people who pay to come watch the game? Or is that just anybody can come? So you have an influx of?
So we, so we, the only place where I think that could happen, and maybe I'm wrong. With football games, we have a lot of people come to the football games, right? And they, they sit down, their kids run around and, and again, I'm not suggesting we don't still pay to have somebody here because we do have that safety piece. We might still have that expense. But then again, we might not. The JV, the JV boys soccer game where we have, you know, 12 sets of parents, maybe from both sides coming. You know, that one might be one we do, do without. But I would, I, the reason why I prefer this by not, by apologizing by not talking to Justin and Matt and Jen is there is that, there is that safety piece there. How many bodies do we need to run the game? Well, because parents do get out of hand and kids do get out of hand. So we do need, do need that, that supervision piece. I'm not trying to get away from supervision. I'm just trying to get away from charging people to come watch their kids play. And I think a lot of schools have done that.
So my only question on that, which I have no problem being, obviously I've gone to a million of my kids' games. So if we have something on the turf and Peru comes in there and the guy's wearing his blue jacket, do we charge him $2 or does he walk right through too?
Well, for Peru people, that's whatever. No, everybody, everybody would get, it suits everybody. It would be everybody.
No, that's.
At home, is that, everybody comes in?
Welcome to Beadman Town. Come watch some kids play, cheer them on.
Cole.
If we ever get into financial distress again and we want, oh, this is a way that we can, you know, help, then we're going to have a hard time saying, okay, now you have to pay.
That's true. We did it before.
Because I can guarantee people are going to like. The guy grew up in a day and he said he just paid it and it was just automatic and that's how that school helps to break, you know, to make the money.
I grew up in that. I went to St. John's too, right? And it was, we were paying for, for gyms, floors and, and uniforms, that money for sure. But I'm, I'm saying to you right now, that's not, that's not the situation we find ourselves in. And if, you know, if we have a fun balance, a significant fun balance.
Okay.
Well, I think the other side of the point too is $2 doesn't seem very much. But I bet to some families it is.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think, you know, if you want your kids and you can. That's a, that's an alarming thing right there.
This is a stretch.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is a stretch, but say we continue to pay the $2 to get into an athletic event. Now our boys soccer team is in the sexuals and now it's $7.
Yeah, five or seven, right? Yeah.
We give tickets to our parents and we pick that cost up from the money that we pay for our admissions to our games so they're not paying the $7 a person to get in.
That's a logistical nightmare.
I'm, yeah.
How would I possibly get those $7 for all those individual people?
They're bringing that jacket up or?
It is, it is.
Yeah, sexuals is tough.
All right.
Why don't we just bring that back up?
Yeah. Anything else on the consent agenda? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Policies. Resolved the superintendent of schools are convinced to the Board of Education to approve the following policy. Internal audit function being revised. Motion? Motion, Greg. Second?
I'll second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. There's a, there's a consent agenda on the financial. Resolved the superintendent of schools are convinced to the Board of Education of the following resolutions on this consent agenda. Financial reports and transfers yet are hereby approved. Motion please.
A motion, Cole.
Cole, second. All right. Discussion on the financial reports and questions on transfers. Okay. Go call please.
Drake Bean?
Hi.
Douglas Stevie?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gabway?
Yes.
Patty LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Nicole Buhform?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
Motion passes. Additional items to discuss. So I'm going to hold off with pointing this. I don't want to spend the time doing this at the table.
Oh, so we have to do this at the table?
No.
For the transparent, for the?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm saying that, that doesn't mean we can't come back and mention to everybody what happened. I'm saying that for efficiency.
Has everybody else had an idea?
I, I, anybody have an idea what they want?
What?
What they want to be on, thoughts or anything? Or we just?
Other committees?
Yeah, sometimes in the past we have just emailed interest and then, and then mention, mentioned at the next board meeting who was placed on.
And we also need to designate a committee chairperson. It's like today I was asking like who wants to do the report? And the committee chairperson helps.
Right.
So I'd like to stay on the three minute.
Okay.
That's possible.
Okay.
So everybody, the chairperson, like I did.
I'm on it. I'd like to stay on the audit with Nicole.
Okay.
I'm on the committee of nine, then one minute, and then health and safety, which also is my very first meeting. Seems like that here.
All right. So I'll just, I'll work with that.
Are they all available?
No. So that's, that's just it. You guys should take the time to take a look at the break down of each of the committees.
Yeah, what the, what it says about them or what the committee does.
Oh, wait a second.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on health and safety.
Two others on the top page, please.
Okay. Where's this from? What is this I have? Chelsea, is that folder still on here?
Is that what?
Uh, yes, it, it, it transferred over.
Okay, so if you go to Board of Education portal for this new year, new year committees, and then open up the spreadsheets.
Is it blank spreadsheet?
Ah, you missed it.
I didn't hear it since, in the last years.
Give me a second.
So I'll, I'll be honest about any of these committees, but I, I think as far as negotiating, sorry, I do, I would need to abstain from that.
All right, let's just start with, with the ones that people are already on for the sake of continuity. Okay. Nicole, you were on audit?
Operations and negotiations.
All right, and you're the chair of the audit. All right?
Yes.
Ken, go back around. Rick, you were on which ones?
Health and safety.
John, who do we have you on?
You're on policy and.
John, John was on policy and hall of fame.
Yep, okay.
And I'm willing to sit on and oversee the body.
All right. All right. Doug, which ones were you on?
I'll chair the policy. I've been, I was the chair last year, so I'll chair that.
Okay.
And I was on committee of nine, which doesn't really need a chair. And I was also on professional development, which is fine.
Okay. Patty, who were you on again?
I was on audit.
Okay.
Health and safety with Rick and the committee of nine.
Health and safety, audit, committee of nine. All right. And it was policy and negotiations for me. All right, so. Chris, you're, you're on operations, right?
Operations and policy.
Patty, health and safety, hall of fame, we'll take those.
All right, so. We're done. So audit right now, we have, we need one person for the audit. We have Patty and Nicole, we need one person. Financial stuff, you don't learn about that. Typically meets in the morning?
Yeah, we meet month to month or sometimes every other month.
Yeah, depending on the time of year.
And it doesn't go long. We start at 10 of 8 and we're done usually by 8:30. Usually not long enough. If it's only one month, it's sometimes even shorter. Yeah, it seems shorter, yeah. I can usually get to my job by now. Yeah.
One one?
So we, we lost a person.
All right, we're going to have to appoint someone. Next one, operations. We have three already. Policy were good, health and safety.
Ed, are you on policy too still?
Yes.
What were you on?
Policy and negotiations.
Before we go to, before we move on from operations, we need a chair. We just need a chair.
Oh, yes. It's either Rick or Chris. It's because we're the audit. You guys duel it out. All right.
I'd like to be.
Okay, so we'll get to that one. So policy right now, we're already set up for three. Health and safety. Rick is that one and you said Dave, you wanted to be on that one?
Yes.
All right. And Rick, did you say you wanted to chair that one?
Health and safety.
Your honor. Committee of nine.
Right, operations, we need a chair.
No, we already have one.
Oh, you said, oh, I'm sorry, I said.
Committee, committee of nine, Doug, Patty, and was I on that one?
No, no, do it.
Committee of nine?
We lost a person off of that too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not very hard.
And you were on.
No.
Yeah, I was.
It's once like every four months, something like that. It's an hour and a half. Yeah.
So.
We just, we get three board members, three administrators and three people from the.
From the school.
BT. Mr. Ku Care and two of his representatives and they bring to the board for about an hour. It's, it's, it's actually a good committee.
It's amazing what you learn.
All right. Okay. Mr. Bean, you're on that. No need, you don't need a chair for that one, do we?
No.
All right. Professional development, we have Doug is on that with one more person, a professional developer. All right.
We don't need a chair for that.
Negotiations, I, we have me, Nicole, and two more.
Do you have negotiations coming up? Well, we're late on a couple.
Only because of your experience.
Conflict of interest.
There's no, there's no doubt, there's no.
I'm only, you know, playing by his experience on it. So what is he, I need one more victim. Negotiations.
Technically isn't, there isn't a conflict of interest, technically. I know there's.
You don't make up?
There's a perception, but it's not really one.
I understand.
Yeah.
So Rick?
Oh, Rick is it?
Volunteer done?
There's no conflict, there isn't. And some people might perceive it, but I know there isn't.
Okay, hall of fame, we need one more person for hall of fame.
I'll be back.
Great.
Who's on the hall of fame?
John, Chris and Dave, right?
John, Chris and Dave. Okay, I still need one person for audit. Let's see here. You're on, you're on two, right?
Yes, sir.
Doug's on three, John's on three, Chris is on two.
One's the most lucky and then maybe one's every two months.
Hey, it's not a habit to know and you really like it.
But we meet at, we meet?
It tells all about like the cafeteria, the money shop, the doors, if they make mistakes.
Chris, we usually meet at 7:45 and go for roughly an hour if that works.
It's a great place to learn the finance.
Once in a great while, David was a donor. But now it's a great surprise.
Yes, force me to get it done. All right, okay.
Thank you.
So who is it?
Chris. Chris is on it. So let's see, Patty's on three. I'm sure nobody's overloaded here. Nicole, are you, Rick is on three. Dave, Dave, you're on two?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I'm on two, but I'm also on CDS board and I'm also on a couple of state committees.
They don't count.
They don't count. Good on them.
They sound good.
Okay. You good, Chelsea?
Yes.
All right, boss. All right, we're good. Okay, we're done with that.
Thank you. Um, I think Doug had something he wanted to discuss.
The one about the email?
Yes.
All right. Additional comments? Want to go over the email, Doug?
Sure, so everybody, I don't know if everybody saw my email that I sent today. I meant to send it a little bit earlier. Sorry about that. But, uh, so needless to say, two years ago, we put in a coaching handbook and to get a little more structured in our athletic department and how we're handling coaches. And I just found it interesting that last year on our Beadman Town Facebook page, we listed every single coach and they have the salary too, which is fine, I don't really care about that. But every single position was open. This year's post on Beadman Town's website, that was not the case. And in our, everybody, I, I apologize, people in the audience, I didn't send it to you. I just sent it to Mr. Ferschett, Mr. Mannix and every, all the board members. In our. In our coaching policy, we indicated that each coaching position is appointed for one year. And one year only. You have to reapply. So I did see in this year's anticipated, that, that word was put in there. That word was not in there last year. So my question is, are we going to put this out to the public again after we get a little bit of response that has everybody? Or is just those positions, the anticipated positions, gonna go out? And the ones that weren't on the list have already been filled? And just so everybody knows, I have been asked by a lot of Beatman Town residents about that post. A lot. But I don't have an answer. So that's why I post, I sent that email today.
Well, it should be consistent.
If you follow the, there was a committee that, that got together, that developed that process. And that's the process that you pointed out, and that's the process that we're following. Who remembers the process? You were on that committee, you were on that committee.
I'm on that committee still.
So, so why is it different this year from last year?
Um, I'm not sure what happened last year, but the, remember, who, how does a, how does a coach, co, how, how do we handle coaching? How do we, how do we handle reappointment with coaches? You should know that, right? You were on that committee, you remember that? The person who handles the athletic department is sitting right here, maybe we oughta post that question to him.
It's actually a Board, I believe it's a Board conversation.
What do you mean it's a Board conversation? I am bringing it up to the Board because what we did last year is not consistent.
Okay, so the Board, this year, the Board adopted a, a practice, a pol, it's not policy, but a procedure.
Pretty sure it's a handbook, policy, isn't it, Mr. Mannix?
So policies are adopted, and there's a number for those, so there's, those are policies. If it's not an official policy, then it's a Board adopted procedure. These would be a Board adopted procedure, okay? Just like a hiring procedure is not a policy, or adopts it, it's to be followed. It's a procedure to be followed. And that procedure to be followed by the Board, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fershet, Jen, you are also on that committee.
I'm just trying to go through my notes, I don't...
Right. And we had, in that committee, let's just review that committee. That committee was made up of Board members, committee was made up of coaches, committee was made up of parents, committee was made up of administrators, and myself. And maybe I'm missing one other group that was in that, in that. Well, it was a robust committee. We broke up into subcommittees, we came back. We dedicated a lot, a lot, a lot of time, energy, and effort. It was unanimous decision, that Committee five called correctly, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, coaches who had a satisfactory year, right, Dave? If you have a satisfactory year, you're recommended to, if you want to reapply for Board appointment, because you are appointed every year, right? You are recommended. If you're not satisfactory, and you go through, in your probationary, and you go through an improvement process, and you meet the improvement steps, you will, I believe you will be recommended. And you want to still coach, and you've shown that improvement, you will be brought to the Board again. And if you're not satisfactory, and you don't improve, then you are not brought back to the Board. And what more, the last one is, obviously, if you just don't wanna coach anymore, you wanna volunteer, you wanna change your position, you're not brought back to the Board. So people who had a satisfactory recommendation are going to be, not all of them, but the ones that still want to coach, will be brought back to the Board for appointment. You don't post their appointment.
So all, all the, all of the, to counteract what you've just said, I do not believe is being accurate.
Okay.
I will go through the handbook again. I do not believe that is even close to being accurate. So you're telling me, all of the posts that were on your website, on, on our Facebook website, every single one of those coaches that were posted for this year was unsatisfactory?
That's not what I'm saying at all.
You just said that.
So let's, let's just go back and...
So all the ones that weren't...
Unless they're all, unless they're open positions, Doug. They may, they may not be that they're unsatisfactory, maybe, I'm just spitballing here, maybe they're just empty positions.
But the handbook, I put that in the email, that is a one-year appointment.
Correct, nobody's disputing that.
Then why wouldn't you put it out there for somebody else to, if, if it's a one-year appointment, then why wouldn't you put it out there so I can apply for the basketball coach, or the football coach, or the hockey coach, or the wrestling coach?
So the wrestling coach, if he's satisfied, the committee said, committee that you were on. Correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, you're shaking your head. Jenny, you're shaking your head on this one.
I do, I do remember that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find that.
The committee that you were on...
I will look at it.
The committee, you were on that committee, you remember this, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. So your dad's a wrestling coach. If he has a satisfactory year, we don't leave him hanging all year, wondering whether he's gonna get reappointed or not. If he's satisfactory, he says, yeah, I wanna come back.
But you don't post that out there for somebody else that may want that position?
And bump Lenny out of the, Lenny out who had a satisfactory year. We don't do that for, we don't do that for probationary teachers.
It is a one-year position. So, so, let's, let's, let's just use this for an example. I'm a pretty good basketball coach, right? So I, I, I did a great job, yes, last year. And our basketball team did eh, pretty good, maybe, maybe we did really good. But say you would've had Tom Curl, who is the Plattsburgh State Coach, who is no longer a group, who said, you know what, I think I would like to try that job. I would like to coach Beatman Town. I'm a pretty good coach. But Tom Curl is better than me. You wouldn't want the best for the students of Beatman Town?
These are the conversations we had in the committee.
I'm asking you right now, I just used a perfect example. You have a good coach, but you could have a better coach who would be better for the Beat, the kids of Beatman Town.
So again, one of the things that people accuse us of, accuse me of, with making every decision here. We had a shared decision-making committee. The shared decision-making committee came up with this, we had this exact discussion. And the people said, Tom Curl can probably get involved in the program, but can, can Tom Curl go bump Doug Beat? Can Tom Curl go bump just because he wants in? Or can Tom Curl come be an assistant coach if he really wants that? Can he, can he go be a J D coach, modified coach? Because can Tom Curl coach at the college level? He recruited the players. He had, we had this discussion. He recruited those players. You don't get to recruit players here, they show up, and they show up all different sizes and shapes. High school coaching is different than college coaching. And if you've done a good job here, a satisfactory job, that was approved by that committee, we wrote it down, you're gonna, you'll be asked back. So if we disagree with that, that's again, that was just like Dave just said, well, entering the next thing in the doors. We, the Board can take that work that that committee did and change it. You can do that.
Alright.
Can I add something?
Hold on, hold on, I have a floor. Alright, hold on, okay.
I am on that committee.
I'll give you a turn in a second. Alright, so just, just to be clear, there is a process, a policy, not a policy, but a process thing that we voted on, Doug's absolutely right. This discussion was had at an extent. So some of it was, like Doug says, well, if we have, if we leave it always open, that we have the opportunity of bringing people, bringing people on, that who otherwise... So the risk was that someone outside would never want to try to participate because they feel that someone else always has it. So that's not necessarily good. The other, other situation is also like Dan said, that you don't wanna dismiss someone who's internally already doing a good job, you make them feel insecure. However, it is a one-year term. And any place that you have a term on any position, it's posted every time that position comes up. So my question is, we, well, my statement is, last year, and I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the Facebook post, but last year, it was placed entirely with everybody on it. Even, even people that already had satisfactory, right?
So I believe, and, and I don't know whether it was because this is a newer Board adopted procedure, but I believe I got a phone call from Ron Moss, the Union President, and maybe Scott can go check on this. And I believe I got a call from Greg Myers, who was Athletic Coordinator, who said, that's not the way we handle this. And I believe I talked to Joey and Donna, who said I made a mistake. But I'm recalling a year ago.
Okay, so, well, we need to address that because we can't, we can't suddenly change something because people are calling or whatever, right? So, so, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what happened, but you just said that they called, they complained about, or concerns about it.
They said, why, they said, why, why did this go out? As I recall, for a year ago, from memory, they called and said, hey, we don't usually put every, every position out there. Right?
But we had had that discussion in, in, in the committee already. And, and we discussed that those people that are already doing well, already have an advantage in selection, right? Because they've got a satisfactory, if you get anybody off the street to come in, you know, we already got Doug's doing greatest basketball coach, even, even if you get this college coach to come in, he may not be the best fit for, for kids either, right? But if Doug's already had a satisfactory, a great track record with the Athletic Director, then it may not matter if the faculty's out and want this.
I thought we were hiring the best hire.
Well, well, yeah, but you have to define that.
Yeah, I, I totally understand that. I, I, I get, I mean, you can't take, I just use that as an example. You can't take a college coach and make him a high school coach. That, that is apples to oranges. I just use that as an example to say, Tom Curl is a way better coach than Doug Beat. And that if we have a candidate that who would be a really good coach for this school and would help the kids, maybe we oughta consider him and at least put that out there to let this gentleman, or woman, or whatever, help our school district and our kids. I know for a fact, we have had that last year, and I got, got swept under the rug two times.
Your, your point's well made. Your key word there is consideration. So there's, we need to be aware of this, talking about making sure that people are considered, not necessarily... We moved somebody else.
Wouldn't you wanna give them a chance?
Yes, yes.
Do you wanna, should...
I mean, hold on. I have, I have a different one. Dave had a question. Next. Go ahead.
There's a lot about this I agree with, and there's a lot about this I disagree with. I have coached here for twenty-one years. I have coached here before there was Ballroom, which just started last year, which I'm glad we went to the evaluation policy. That makes me very happy because it does weed out some people. But also, you've got somebody like Lenny Gadway, or Jamie Lozier, I'm just throwing names out there that, how do you, what am I looking, what, how do you, who are you to say that they had to back you? And football started last two weeks ago. And on the Facebook post, it says June twenty-eighth is the deadline to apply. So now we don't have way room for football and soccer or basketball now that everybody can attend? Because we don't know who the coach is? I'm not saying you're right or wrong, or you're right or wrong, but I'm, I'm saying that...
Sound a meeting, it's a...
We've got, if this is the way we're gonna go, the dates have gotta be changed a little, at least at a bare minimum. Because...
But Dave, that's it, you're spot on. You're spot on. And you're spot on because if, if Lenny does that good job, or Jamie does that good job, and it's satisfactory, circle right on there, you're recommended, you're recommended for, for appointment.
I feel, and don't take this the wrong way here, everybody on this board, I am not talking about, I'm not talking about the wrestling issue that everyone was up in arms about months ago. We have done some coaches here dirty. We have, have the reason why we're waiting for the Board. And I feel that there was a disservice to some people here, and that's why I'm here. And...
So your, your intent is well, is well placed, alright? One of the difficulties about having this conversation is that the public isn't always in the know of all the information. And I'm not talking about wrestling, you know, I'll encompass soccer, it can be, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter, right? So this is the reason why I actually, I actually pushed for this athletic and extracurricular, because I also thought that the extracurricular groups, clubs, were kinda getting not the attention that there's, the value, the importance, art, music, that they should as well, right? Also, we weren't doing a very good job of evaluating the system. So all these, all these things kinda were thrown in, right? So yes, this is a living process that we need to, yeah. I had thought about, we talked about, about timing soccer, football, that's a great point. But recommended doesn't mean selected. The but, but recommended means highly recommended. You would, you would, it would imply that person is the first choice, unless somebody else comes in. If we get, you know, you're gonna clock from Europe to come in and decide you're interested in soccer, you know, I'm not gonna not look at the guy.
Do, do we wanna invite, with lots of, we invite conversation from the audience if we ask Jen about some financial stuff. I have some administrators here who, you know, who were on that committee too. Surely one.
I'd like to comment for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Since it was brought to me, when did we change the policy of allowing administrators to coach? We haven't since the late eighties, early nineties without marriage. Who changed that policy?
So that, that's, I don't believe that's a policy, that might, I, I don't...
It's been that way since the late eighties, early nineties, and for a good reason. Last year was the first year we allowed that to happen. Why did we change that?
We had good people applying.
Okay, we'll take.
Basketball coach.
How can you effectively be? You don't have any home games, so you're never here to deal with any issues.
Was one.
Everybody was asked to give up, I can remember that, and I'm, I'm wondering why we have to accept it. Who, who made that justification? Especially when... Can I ask a question?
Yeah, okay, alright, so...
If I get a response.
Well, I, this doesn't sound like, I don't, I don't know, was there, just because there was a big vacancy, nobody else? I mean, sometimes if we don't have someone, I don't know.
So, see, I know it's hard, um, sometimes when we shift, the Board shifts, we have five new people here, right? Um, there was conversations with Board, um... But did they believe it?
Yes, man, we're done.
The Board, whatever that decision was, would, would happen when...
Let me go straight up.
Okay.
So, hold on, let me interrupt you for a second. First of all, just to clarify, is there somewhere that says that, do we have anything written that says that when you become an administrator, you're no longer allowed to coach? Is there something operationally, procedurally, that prevents us from assigning a coach that is administrator? Because if that doesn't exist, then it doesn't matter, right?
You're still gonna be effectively able to figure it out.
Well, that's, yes, but as far as, right now, right now, as far as a procedure, we, we identify what the procedures are, the policies, and, and we go by that law. And if that's not working, then we modify it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, good. So first of all, what do we have as far as policy or procedure that would prevent administrator from being a coach, or assistant coach? Or, uh, we've had Board members be, um, assistant coaches?
Okay, okay, correct?
Correct.
Right. So, do we have anything? I'm asking. Any, any policy, a policy procedure that prevents administrator from doing so?
I am not aware of any policy.
Okay.
So I got a mentality, Ed, I was not looking for that. Honestly, the reason why I, that administrator thing, that, that wasn't in my head, that's a valid point. That was a valid point. My point, all I wanted to bring up is, what we did last year is not what we're doing.
I, I, let me, let me circle back to that. Let me circle back to that. Alright, so, so we have identified that we don't have anything...
That we know of.
That we know of, alright? So that means that you could bring that up as a discussion, we could address... We could address good or bad, the ugly, whatever, right? So, that's the way to follow this process, and so we should. Okay, so, I'll, I'll take another.
If, if there's nothing in place that's being based on past practice, it's what you're saying.
Past practice, but since late eighties, nineties. But that's not.
I haven't seen one before.
Okay. Yeah, it, it has, like, that little snippet that I took out. It's about a 17-page document. It's pretty good, it's really good. I got a bit to, I was, I only took that little bit out because that was my point.
Does Eric have, had a question? He's a patient body, so.
It's already sent to me.
Okay, go ahead, what's your question?
Uh, I, I sit on a lot of code committees. Um, and generally, when, when we come and we are prepared to discuss specific sections of a, of a code, a policy, a procedure, become prepared with that section of the code, policy, or procedure. Um, I guess, I guess I would just recommend or ask that if we, if we are going to come prepared to talk about policy, let's come prepared with that section so that we can discuss chapter and verse, what it says versus what doesn't say.
We don't, we, well, that's the point. We don't talk about it here. We, we can have a permanent conversation.
Yeah.
But then it gets sent to the committee to address it. So, what Doug did is he sent out his delight item of what he was addressing, which, which made sense. All right, so, going back to, going back to procedure, then the question is, is when last year's list was put out, was it following the procedure? If it was, why wasn't it done that way this year? If it wasn't, then it was a mistake, right? So, we need to clarify that. Is that, can I address your question, Doug?
Yeah.
The difference between last year and this year?
Well, last year, they listed everything. And in the policy, it says it's a one-year commitment. So, you would think that this year, you would list everyone in as well. And if you're, and I have no problem if, and they're recommended, that is totally fine. I have zero problem with that. But if there's somebody else, Justin, or, or, or the tennis team, or wants to be the, the art teacher, or the drama teacher, why wouldn't they be able to get an opportunity as well? That's what we're getting at right here. That's what we're talking about. Well, you're just saying that, 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 that's, if you're recommended, there's, there's, it's shut and dry, no one else can apply for it.
That's a conversation we had at the meeting.
Right, so, and again, we've had other committee members here who should weigh in, but we don't. When we hire, we've worked really hard to get that position, right? We're not going to post her job at the end of the year and make her compete for the next four years for that 10-year track position and see if we can find a better reading teacher and say hit the brakes. We need to do it to the relative. You're talking about something different. We're not talking about teachers. We're talking about coaches. We're not talking about teachers. I firmly agree with you. If we have the, we just got hired two new associate principals. I wasn't on any of those committees. I'm happy they're here. Do you think I want to, and I want them to stay. Obviously, they're good people. We hired them, right? Like we do our coaches.
Yes.
I don't want to get rid of these people. I don't want somebody to go out and compete against their job because that's not in our policy. We have hired them, we're going to put them on a probation, Eric, correct? And in four years, if they're great, we're going to give them tenure. And I hope they do. That is not the policy for the coaches, Mr. Mannix.
That's governed by VTA, and it's also point of probation, right? That is, you're right about that.
So, can we, can we? Justin, what, what do you remember?
Yeah, my, my recollection is I was on that subcommittee for evaluations. We took recommendations of the different categories, subtopics that are in that evaluation. I think you gave it to Mr. Merritt. Um, and then defined what those areas were for the coaches and for administrators to evaluate those. One of the concerns, and I think actually I was the one that brought it up, is if we're going to have an evaluation system of a coach or a teacher, that evaluation system, if they're deemed effective, that those people would retain that position if they applied for that job the following year. And that's done through letters of intent, not a reapplication. They would submit a letter of intent to the district. If not, that position will be posted. However, if a position were to be moved, for example, we have a modified basketball coach that we have opening at JV. That's a new position. Moving from modified to JV, they were evaluated at that modified position. That JV position would be posted for.
It's not automatic jumping, right?
So, we had a list of applicants, positions that were posted where we actually have applicants for, but we're looking for the best candidate. So, if someone moves positions, their position will be posted. However, if they didn't seem effective in his evaluation, a metric that the board proved in the board policy, that we aren't going to repost that position every single season if they're deemed effective.
And part of the conversation was, part, there's a long conversation about whether we're going to post positions or not, whether every year, everybody's position is posted. There's a long committee conversation about that. And one of the things, this goes back to what Dave said, is I just finished football, right? Football is never done, basketball is never done, right? If, if your, if your spot is in jeopardy, you don't know until we interview in the summer, then who's going to be doing all the work you need to do, whether it's ordering equipment, finding the assistant coaches, setting up the weightlifting programs, making sure kids go to the right camp, whatever it is that football coaches or wrestling coaches do or basketball coaches do, why would they need all that work if every year, their job was on the line? That was, that was one part of the conversation. Do you remember that?
And I think, and I could be completely wrong, but I think 2021, we posted everybody because we didn't have evaluations because it just started.
I did mention that earlier today.
Oh, okay.
I said, it was either that or a mistake. But it could have been because.
Because we didn't.
It was the first year.
It was the implementation of this.
Because we didn't do it during COVID.
Of the system, I think.
So, that's our problem. We think we had this conversation. Boom. Dead. And that's all fine and good, but nothing's written down.
Well, we do, we have the.
I sent you what was written down.
Yes.
And I didn't go into this, this recommendation thing because I'm not, that's fine. But if that's what, if we think we did this, and if we think we did that, and maybe we had this conversation, all, all that is, that's nothing. And like, until it's written down. I'm sure we had those conversations. I don't care if we had these conversations. We can have this conversation right now. But if we don't write it down in a policy, it doesn't matter.
You're right, so I'm looking, I'm looking at what you said, so.
So, we could, I, I actually agree with Mr. Bean, is that why don't we research this out, actually what we have in this handbook, and we can have this conversation for another day? I, I just threw that email out here to make everybody aware that what we did last year is not what we are doing this year.
Yes, so here's what it says. Here's what it says. This is from what you've sent out. So, it says, there are, uh, the conditions of coaching tenure are contingent upon the following, there's four items. That there are enough participants to field the team for the approved season, obviously. You're going to have the kids to coach. You are to start on or about the starting date for that sporting season, et cetera. You coach in a professional and ethical manner, obviously, and refrain from any, uh, conduct that may be considered unbecoming. Okay, so that's a behavior thing. The last one says, coaching is a one-year commitment, and you must submit your coaching intentions each year to be voted on and approved by the Board of Education. Anyway, so this says, it does not say that you're the only candidate.
You, you, every, every.
I understand the intent.
Justin, are we missing anything else in there?
No.
So, we're, so we won't recommend, so we're, it says on that evaluation, it says, we recommend you, the admin, administration will recommend you for continued coaching. That was adopted. That's a different section, that's in that, right?
This is true. It says, it says on here, satisfactory, if you're considered satisfactory, you're to be recommended for continued assignment.
So, and the thing is, this isn't a my, this isn't a me thing. This is a committee thing.
Yes.
I feel indebted to the committee for working all those summer hours.
No, but you're, you're right, and you're both right. It's a good process to go through discovery to, to look at this, right? So, on the one main document, it doesn't, doesn't negate someone else we looked at, looked at. But the actual evaluation form that we all adopted does say that if it's satisfactory, to be recommended for continued assignment. If you're probationary, to be, to be recommended for reassignment, providing an understanding can be reached in the areas where proven is needed.
What's the last section?
And if it's unsatisfactory, not to be recommended for reassignment. So, this is part of the approved process. If we want to revisit this, then we need to go back to the committee and have a discussion.
So, I guess I, I only have one more question, and we can end it with this, for myself anyway. I won't waste anybody else's time. I actually did, in, uh, ask a question in that email. Is this our final, are we, is this our final, is this just an inquiry? And we're going to send out another one? Or is this our final one? And that's, I just want an answer to that question. And I am done.
Do you have?
Yeah, based, based on to be recommended for continued assignment.
No, 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 that's not his question.
He's answering.
No, I, that's, I'm answering.
Oh, okay, right.
Then, based on this document, yes, that the posting that went out is the correct version of the policy that we approved.
No, that's not what he's asking.
Yeah, so he's saying what went out is correct. It's not a substantial.
Yeah, what went out is correct, and I don't know who posted that out on the committee's wall.
Are you, and just for clarity, are you asking that regardless of the year you have, your, everybody's position should be posted?
Yes.
And then we did have that conversation. The committee was thorough and had that conversation. I'm just bringing that up. We could, obviously, the, the board can take committee work and recommend, take the recommendation, change it, whatever we want to do.
And with all due respect, though, this doesn't say, like, the snippet you sent, it doesn't say that it's a one-year appointment, so that it's a one-year commitment. So, my question is, is, so the coach, because I mean, the coach is committing to one year.
Coach commits to one year if they want, if they are satisfactory.
Yep.
And they say, awesome, I'm coming back. You're going to be recommend, you've got our word. You're going to be recommended to the board. And you can go about doing the things you need to do to, and we'll invest in you to go to coaching clinics. You can go about ordering your uniforms, putting your balls away.
Yeah, but this, but what this says, to clarify.
Thank you.
It doesn't mean that it's a commitment by the coach. What it says here is that as the coaching position is a one-year commitment, and you must submit your coaching intentions each year.
Yeah.
So, it's, so it essentially means the position is a one-year position.
If that's the case, then that's.
And you might be hired or you might not be.
Yeah, the board has the right to, to say, regardless of you're satisfactory, regardless of how great your season was, win a launch.
Well, I just threw this out here because we haven't had our board recommend it. So, I just wanted to throw this out.
It's coming next month.
So, everybody can think about it.
Regardless of.
Mr. Ferschett has already answered my question.
Okay.
I have no more questions.
I just want to be clear that regardless of, of people's intent or apparent intent, we need to have these conversations to get things right. So, that's okay. It's okay to have the questions, go ahead.
Just to throw one other flying enigma.
Go ahead.
From my understanding, state education law says that coaching is an extension of the physical education program and that rights to it our First Movement Teachers Association. So, you could have a situation where someone did a good job, but there's an equally qualified person that's on staff, newly hired, that might be interested in that position. And they would have rights to, you, teachers, you get first.
Uh, okay, okay.
The state law says coaching is an extension.
So, more than one person could be interested in this position.
Right.
Okay, so, but part of the discussion we had at the table was that people may not know that that position is available if it's not advertised.
Don't you say if it's listed, or they're all there, that somebody might not be interested in it would. But an internal person would go ask a question if it's.
Yeah.
They'd go ask, so, like, I'm interested in this. And then there would be a conversation with the athletic director to say, okay, we've got this person that's been doing it for a while. How about you try this level first, and we'll see where we go. And that would appease most teachers that were interested in doing a coaching position.
And we did have that, John, we, and we did have that conversation as well about is it fair to those non-teachers, remarkable bowling coach, right? Um, and others that we've mentioned, is it fair? Because this does happen, it happens in our backyard. When somebody says, "I'm nearing my retirement age. I want to get, bump my final average salary. I want that five grand. I want that coaching position." And you have a 20-year veteran here who's satisfactory every year. We're going to post it, we're going to advertise, and we're going to, we're going to give it to that teacher because they got a certificate, and they never coached a day in their life.
We, we don't want that, and we discussed that. You're right, we discussed that. And that's why what you're saying is, it makes me nervous because I don't believe that a teacher has immediate right to take the position.
They do. I, I'm sure, but that's why the state of the coaching system has the opportunity for coaches to build up. I don't know if it turns into some professional license for coaching if they've done certain group years.
And it's nice that we've had these conversations with VTA members, the VTA president. Um, we've talked about it, we've put a little bit of language into the contract, and we have a shared decision-making to protect the non-teachers and to protect the teachers.
Right.
And that's why we all came together and had these long, arduous conversations that came up with that document.
But, but we don't solve everything all, but I know we spent a lot.
And we came back.
I know, I know we spent a lot of time on it, and we had a lot of stuff. COVID, a lot of things, so, so, nothing's ever perfect. It ends that way.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Are we all right as a board and a school with, we can hire five different basketball coaches, bowling coaches, in five different years, and we're all right with that? We're all right with hiring five varsity wrestling coaches each of the next five years?
That's not what this is saying.
I, but that's our policy with this thing, that if we have to reevaluate every year, how is that fair to anybody?
So, the same, but the same question, hold on, just to respond. The same question goes to if you have, like, like Doug Dan said, a teacher or someone who has no.
It's not what I'm talking about, though.
No, I know, has no, no knowledge of the sport. And you have someone who's an Olympic gold coach. He can't get an opportunity at all for the same reason, five years in a row. Then, that's, it is the same but opposite.
Say I'm a teacher and I coach football. I coach this year, I do an all-right job. You have, hire Belichick come in, you're going to hire Bill Belichick. But now you don't want him anymore because he's too mean. Now you're going to go hire some college coach. But now we don't want him, we're going to go hire some new guy. Technically, that's how our policy is. We can change every year.
Well, no, no, that's, no. You rely, you rely on the leadership to establish a process. You rely on this leadership to establish a process, you know?
We, we actually talked about Bill Belichick.
Well, one at a time, one at a time.
Nate, we actually talked about Bill, Bill Belichick moving in. That was a direct conversation, I remember it vividly. And we said it wouldn't be fair to bump the person that, that is, who has been doing the job really well.
I agree with that.
Okay, let me, let me just finish. However, could we get Bill into the program somewhere? How invested, does he just want the top spot? Because of his ego, and you're right, Bill Belichick is.
I have 120% of what I'm saying. I haven't seen the whole thing of the policy that the committee, I haven't seen it all. But what I'm getting from the conversation, and I'm sitting here biting my tongue, is that if we're going to post it every year for every position, that means every position is over. I don't care if it's satisfactory or non-satisfactory. So you can change a coach every year. How is that consistency here?
That's not the, that's what, that's not what the committee wanted.
Nicole, Nicole has a story.
Is that not why you're questioning the way the posting was? Because last year, it was right after this was all settled and started, everything was listed. The policy was made and all the positions were listed and everybody had to put their letters in attendance. This year, my understanding is we would list every single position because you have that ability of those, those individuals coaching to put their letter of intent. So if they've done that and they know that they're going to be coaching next year, you only post what you think you're going to need.
Why would you not, why would you not post everything and get every single applicant?
Because sometimes it's not always about the W. It's about the rapport with the kids. And no, listen, I'm just saying. It's about the rapport with the kids. It's about the teacher who is coaching, who maybe wants to coach better each year so that they can maybe continue moving up the ranks. That's how I see it. You know, I'm not vested in the sports as some other people are at this point. Maybe I will be with my children being young right now. But I have to say, if I'm looking at this as an outsider, I feel like I understood the policy just fine. And maybe I don't, but it seems pretty concrete to me that anticipated means, well, based on what we have for these positions, this is what we're going to need. And if somebody has a really great, if somebody has a great interest, plug them in somewhere and get them in the system.
But if you don't, if you don't advertise that, how do you get that really great person to plug them in somewhere?
Advertising is what's available.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That is my point. What was, my point of my email was not who we're hiring. It's how come we are not advertising every single position?
Why would you advertise every position? We have a pro, a, we have a policy.
Why would you, why would you advertise every position? Don't you want the best person?
Let me answer this for both of you, but I want to get John to the table first.
First, I want to commend the committee for putting in an evaluation process for coaches because in a lot of districts that doesn't happen and it is an automatic, you just keep going with it. Secondly, what we really want is that head coach that's going to commit to the program, put the time and energy in that that young guy's in there did for hockey for years and the headaches that went along with merger situations in hockey and the guys that have done it. You want that long-term person. And I think if somebody else is interested in getting into the program, there, there are other slots in that program. Come in, get your feet in, you know, start with a JV or a modified team and work your way up if you're interested. And then you have, because the successful programs in high school sports have consistency to them. You got to have somebody that owns the program. I've worked in schools. Shady's got a great soccer program. Total consistency in coaching. Shady's got a terrible basketball program. The coaches turn all the time. Because there's nobody that buys it and says, this is my program. I'm going to make it work.
You don't have the time.
Yeah, so.
And that's what you're asking for with programs.
Where can we find the policy? We're going to send it out to the portal.
So to address both of Nicole's and Doug's, something that might, might help. Something that might help this question for us, for us, is maybe what we need is another category above satisfactory, just like we do it with other positions. Because the risk, one of the, one of the things that I remember being an issue was the term satisfactory was very easily pushed up or down. You could easily have someone that was a mediocre coach that gets slotted into satisfactory for a year, year in and year out. And that's dangerous because they, they start getting acclimated to what they do. They may not do a good job, but they still get a satisfactory. And you don't, you don't get the opportunity to bring somebody else in, right? But if you have, if you have a different category that says, you know, exceptional, or just like, just like your, your, your evaluation game or something that allows you to say, well, maybe, to Doug's point, if you have a coach that, that marks off an exceptional, the exceptional does have to include the rapport with, with children, their, their ability to, you know, talk to parents and all, that whole complete picture. Maybe that would allow Mr. Frichette or the staff to put satisfactory in a place for people that, well, maybe if somebody else gets advertised, then maybe, maybe we do. I'm just throwing that out there.
How do you? How does he know the rapport that I have with my fifty-two kids? That's the issue. If we're going to go hire the satisfactory, how does Doug know how I'm doing with my kids?
That's his job. So.
But that's also why there's an evaluation.
And that's why there's an evaluation.
Good question. How do you evaluate a coach in his first year? It takes years to create a program.
You have to, you have to picture it, right?
I agree with the way you guys are doing. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I feel that if the guy's there and he's doing a great job, then you keep him. You don't look for somebody else because long-term is going to create a better program.
Do you define a coach by the wins or the losses?
No, no.
Right. So you evaluate their performance and everybody can stand to improve. But that's why the evaluation process is there now to address those things that maybe they could be working on or maybe that won't improve them. But if they, if you don't give them that opportunity, they might not, they might go walking up the street and be the best coach. But they have that ability to.
But he said, he said the word, the operative word is if they're a great coach. So you don't have that. You have satisfactory.
But satisfactory, there's criteria to meet satisfactory. There's criteria. You can't just put satisfactory.
Jeff has so much on his plate now. There's forty, thirty-something sports here. And how, how can he adjust his job at all? No, that's, I mean, I'm not going there at all. I'm just saying, he evaluates, he evaluated me and I got satisfactory. And he went to some of my games. He did his job. But how do you, how does he know, like? How does, with so much that he's got going on with his job, how does he know? Like, we're going to go like, oh, he can be better than satisfactory. He's going to be excellent.
Same way, in the same way we trust. Just there was so many trusted teacher to try to understand the students that they have in their class. I mean, that's the job.
It's easy to talk about it if you're not there.
Again, but somebody has to do it.
It's deeper than that.
Somebody has to do it.
It's deeper than, it's deeper than that.
You can't talk about it. I don't have to be there to understand. There's a fact that you have to have a policy or something in place. There's something in place. And you're not going to please everybody because you can't. There's absolutely no way to please everyone. You want to, you want to recruit the best coaches. You want to support your staff. You want to help the kids. So how is, how can we all agree on the best way to do that? In my opinion, that's what we're trying to do. That was the first step, getting that, that policy in place. If it needs to be reviewed, well, then let's have a review committee on that.
We could, we could look at it again.
But I think we're taking a lot of time on just this sports piece. Which I understand is important. It's the core of the school. But what about the extracurriculars that aren't sports? We talked about that too.
Well, the same, the same applies to those. The same if I.
If we get to something that I, that I know that much about, I'll be the same person sitting here having that discussion with anybody.
There's a good question, Dave. So the first thing you need to do, and anybody else, is read that document. Because that document lays out the requirements that you're talking about, which is what they use to evaluate coaching. So why don't we do that? Why don't, why don't we just, everybody get, we'll send everybody a copy, everybody, of the extracurricular and athletic program and we'll sit down and address any questions that we should.
And just back to one of Dave's points, on page twenty-six, my page twenty-six, my, my print is different than yours. We identify a bunch of people who are trained in evaluation. And they've gone to school for evaluation and continue to be trained in evaluation. We talked about evaluation frequently.
It's on page twenty-three.
Page twenty-three. So when you do, do, do the work to go back and become an administrator, you do understand core components of, of evaluation. And I do know that he was at games and he was at practices, but also.
He was.
No, no, I know you're not. I know you're not.
Justin's running around with his head cut.
Reg was supposed, Reg was supposed to do some of those. I can do some of those. Matt can do some of those. Principal Melso can do some of those for the modifies. And if JD kids playing, Principal Manchester could do some of those. They're quick. It doesn't take a lot to see rapport. It doesn't take a lot to see, you know, the components of a coach. It's not on the scoreboard. It's another place. Are they prepared? It's all in that document, what we're looking for.
Yeah, it is. But good, it's a good question. Let's look at it. Let's make it better. It's not going to happen overnight. And you're, you know, you're probably, look at that.
And we did, we not only.
I just wanted to know why. I just wanted to know why everybody wasn't listening. I didn't need to go down this rabbit hole, obviously. Or that's what you get.
Where are we now? Where?
No, it's fine. I think it's good.
Public comment.
Public comment.
That was not my point.
Now, anybody else have public comment? Sure. All right.
You don't want to speak?
Hey, look, you know what? It's good. I'm, I'm good to have a conversation as long as it's in the right way. Do we have an executive session now?
No.
Okay. So we don't have a need for clerk protest. All right. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting at eight thirty-five. Motion?
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor? All right.
Do you enjoy the morning?
Thank you.